Good evening, everyone. It is now six o'clock PM in the East Coast. I'm calling it in order. Welcome. We're gonna have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Of the Pledge of Allegiance now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for being here tonight. Mrs. Garza, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Chairman Williams.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Kiefer.
Here.
Mr. Di Maria.
Here.
Mr. Albright.
Here.
Mrs. Seabird.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mrs. Stevens.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. Are there any? No problem. Are there any additions and corrections to the agenda? No? Thank you, Dr. Newman. I believe there are no citizens' comments. Okay? We'll move on to the next item. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. So may I have a motion, please?
Sir, I will be sent it out. Presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Di Maria, second by my eyes were down again. Miss Seabird, thank you for waving. That the school board of the city Manassas approved the consent agenda as presented. May I have a roll call vote, please? Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. If a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Garza?
Yes. Chairman Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Kiefer.
Aye.
Mr. Di Maria. Miss. Joe Albright.
Aye.
Mrs. Seabird.
Aye.
Mrs. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Stevens.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. The consent agenda passed this seven zero. Next on the agenda is the discussion agenda. And the first and only item, it looks like, is old business, monthly update, MCPS Forward 2020, Return to Learn. Dr. Kevin Newman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman Williams, School Board. Tonight, we have another presentation. Dr. Saunders will provide the details for that. And then we'll be waiting for any questions. We've got staff waiting for any questions from the board. We'll try to answer them. The presentation tonight will attempt to answer some of the questions from board members from the previous meeting when the board, when the board made the vote for the virtual learning start of the school year. So hopefully, the presentation will answer those questions. But if not, staff and I are waiting afterwards. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Saunders.
Okay. So I am doing a little bit of work here to try to find. It's not allowing me to see my own presentation, so give me one second. Okay, so my apologies for the technical difficulties. Ms. Garza is going to share the presentation and I will move on from here. So are you good, Ms. Garza? Perfect. Okay, so good evening Chairman Williams, Vice Chairwoman Kiefer, members of the board, and Dr. Newman. Tonight, our team will share an update on the Manassas City Public Schools Forward 2020 Return to Learn plans. We continue to approach this task with a great deal of flexibility and patience as this situation continues to present changing and unique circumstances. The Virginia Department of Health indicates as of July 28, the 20110 ZIP code has a COVID case count of 1,686, the third highest ZIP code in the Commonwealth. While we are experiencing this challenge like many other areas, we are confident that our school staff is meeting that challenge with proper planning, discussion, and decisions to provide the best for our students in the community. Next slide. As I've said in previous updates, tonight I serve as only as the speaker and I will work through the slides for ease of presentation in the virtual format. But please know the work presented this evening represents the work happening across the division in all department areas. As you see, some of my colleagues are here this evening. Dr. Kramp, Dr. Brent, Mr. Hawkins, Mr. Barrett, Ms. Wingfield, and Ms. Radford are with us and prepared to answer any questions and provide clarification on anything that we present. Our agenda for tonight's update will be the instructional planning, the student service planning, administrative and support services update, technology update, human resources update, and communication update. Next slide. Our return to learn update will focus on the 100% distance learning model. As we prepare for this model, I would like to highlight several key dates. The first, our new teacher's start date was today, July 28, 2020. They were all around the division picking up devices. Our teachers start, all teachers start, August 3, 2020. We have a family student orientation week with material distribution planned for August 24. And our first student day is August 31. Finally, it's very important in this public forum to encourage all of our parents listening tonight to complete the information or update the student information in our system. The link is indicated on the slide. This link will provide us with information to distribute the appropriate technology for students to begin instruction on time. Next slide. In the distance learning model, students will learn and work from home five days a week. Learning will be live and also recorded. Teachers will provide live instruction four days a week. In this model, teachers can work from home, school, or a combination. Teachers will build collaborative Schoology courses by grade, content, course, or level. Next slide. This slide outlines the hours expected by level for students. Learning in the fall will look very different from learning that took place during the emergency closure. Required attendance at school for at-home learning, new content and instruction, increased work time and expectations, grading of student work, and greater structure for schedules across the division. The next several slides outline student learning schedules. Student schedules are similar to those in face-to-face instruction. Next slide. This will be the pre-K schedule. Our pre-K program remains half-day for all students. Teachers will have two classes of students per day. Teachers will work with our families to assist in planning for that day. Students will engage in live instruction in large group, small group, and encore classes. Time is built into the schedule for class meetings, office hours, and skill building. Next slide. The kindergarten schedule includes live instruction and supports academic development. Teachers will work with families to assist in planning. English, language arts, and math on Tuesday and Thursday will include at least 45 minutes of live lesson time daily. Encore's will include the full 30 minutes of a live lesson time daily for both scheduled blocks. Time is built into this schedule for class meetings, small groups, and office hours. Next slide. First and second grade will experience live instruction daily. Teachers will work with families to assist in planning. English, language arts, and math on Tuesday and Thursday will include at least 45 minutes of live instruction lesson time daily. Synchronous encores will include the full 30 minutes of live lesson time. Time is built into the schedule to build classroom community through class meetings, small group instruction, and office hours. Next slide. Our third and fourth grade students will experience live instruction daily to support academic development. Teachers will work with their families to assist in planning. English, language arts, and math will include at least 45 minutes of live lesson time daily. And science and social studies will include 30 minutes of live lesson time daily. Synchronous encores will include the full 30 minutes of live lesson time. And time is built into their schedule to build community, have class meetings, introduce small groups, and have office hours. Next slide. Students at the intermediate and middle schools will follow a schedule similar to an in-person schedule with a Tuesday, Thursday being an A day and Wednesday, Friday being a B day. Double block core classes will include at least 40 minutes of live lesson time daily. Electives and encore classes will include 25 minutes of lesson, of live lessons daily. Just like our elementary schools, time has been dedicated to build a community, have small group instruction, and provide office hours for students and staff. And finally, our high school students will also remain on a schedule that looks very similar to their in-person schedules. They will have G-day classes on Tuesday and Thursday, B-day classes on Wednesday and Friday. All class periods will include at least 45 minutes of live lesson time daily. Students will continue to have access to advisory, community building, office hours, and small group instruction. Next slide. Preparing our staff and our families for distance learning continues to be one of our focus. Ms. Katie Keegan, one of our rock stars in Manassas City, the supervisor of professional learning, has worked with her team to create a responsive, informative, relevant professional learning course for our staff. Our PD is all housed in the same platform that we will expect our students and staff to use in distance learning, which is Schoology. Katie and her team pushed this course out to the Manassas City Public Schools family on July 24. That was on Friday, allowing staff to access the professional development should they want to get a head start. And many of them did. Our new teachers started today. We welcome them to Manassas City Public Schools and can only imagine how they think about their new experience in this type of distance learning. New teachers receive devices and information from their schools. The new teacher Schoology course is available to all and will support new teachers virtually in a learning about Manassas City Public Schools and preparing for their first year of teaching. Finally, Pedro Hernandez, the supervisor of digital learning and innovation, is working on a parent return, a parent return to learn course, which will support our parents in our community. Additionally, Anita Thomas, Assistant Principal at Metz, and Derek Smith, Assistant Principal at Osborne High School, will be leading our parent engagement project designed to support parents as they navigate distance learning. Next slide. Our student services team continues to work on refining and developing instructional plans that support our students with disabilities and our English learners. We will begin our year with distance learning for all students. We will gradually work towards providing some level of in-person instruction for our school-dependent learners. This will be a phased process and will be gradual. We have identified distance learning tools, making full distance learning an appropriate option for our L students. Students will use Imagine Learning and Elevation Math, which provide excellent support for English level, English language learners at all levels. Next slide. We remain focused on supporting our students in social emotional learning as we navigate distance learning. School counselors and student service support staff will continue our service model of lessons, small groups, and individual supports. Additionally, we will be exploring a division-wide social emotional learning curriculum for implementation in 2021. Next, next slide, please. Our support services team has been hard at work preparing our buildings and work sites. Mitigation measures include installation of plexiglass barriers, signage, hand sanitizer stations, touchless hydration stations, specialized equipment, and personal protective equipment. Next slide. Additionally, our support services are readying the food service department and the school buses. Training for key staff are in place and enhanced cleaning supplies are available. A review has been conducted of all support staff positions. We have identified responsibilities for support staff to be used in our distance learning model to support students and families. Excellent. Support services in Osborne High School continue planning for mitigation regarding Virginia High School League participation. At a meeting on July 27, the Virginia High School League selected a participation model where sports are still played but in a condensed and altered format. Winter sports beginning December 14, fall sports February 15, and spring sports April 12. Excellent. Our technology department has been working in three areas. First, student accounts, laptops, and mobile hotspots. Information technology needs a period of time to roll over student accounts for the new school year and resynchronize with all the supporting systems. During the maintenance window, all student accounts will be inaccessible. This will include access to Google, Clever, and Schoology. New passwords will be provided to students during the week of August 24 when students pick up their devices. Our laptops, all student laptops will be distributed beginning Monday, August 24 as part of the orientation. Schools will contact families to schedule visits. All students will need to log into the laptop while onsite in order to create the account and verify functionality. Assistance will be available for students who are needed. And finally, hotspots. Manassas City Public Schools will use the results of the internet survey from June and the registration updates that families are making. Families will be contacted with hotspot pickup procedures, which will occur during the week of August 24. Distribution will be handled centrally through a process separate from the laptop distribution. Next slide. In the human resources area, the Family First Coronavirus Response Act has been made into a Manassas City Public Schools regulation. Under this act, employees may take paid sick leave if they're unable to work or telework and qualify under the provisions. The full regulation may be reviewed on the, on board docs by selecting the hyperlink here. Administrators continue to be trained by Suzanne Renegar, school nurse supervisor, on employee protocol screening and monitoring for COVID. Training was held on July 8 and a second session has been scheduled for July 29. The training has been utilized as appropriate. The employee agreement for self-screening of COVID-19 symptoms was disseminated to all employees through Talon Ed. A variety of COVID-19 signage has been distributed to all work sites. Topics range from common symptoms, what to do if you're exposed, how much paid leave can employees take, and employee take, employee rights, and face masks, do's and don'ts. Finally, the Department of Human Resources is in the process of obtaining COVID-19 Safe Workplace Online Training to provide more information currently and in the future about COVID-19 to all employees. Excellent. Finally, the communications team is continuing to meet with key staff members to provide relevant information regarding return to learn. Information from Manassas City staff will be available in the My MCPS portal. And there will be a public page for parents and students with resources and links to access Manassas City Public Schools' approved platforms for distance learning. Next slide, please. That concludes the update for this evening. Again, many of my colleagues are here on the call that can assist in any questions or any clarifications. Dr. Newman?
Thank you, Dr. Saunders and Chairman Williams. We're ready for any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Saunders, for the presentation. I appreciate it. I know there was a lot that went into that, a lot of teamwork going on. And I'm sorry, I appreciate it again, you all in a short amount of time gave us some great information. So thank you. See, Dr. Brent here and who else do I see? Dr. Kramp, Mrs. Wingfield, Mr. Barrett. And Mrs. Garza, of course. And this is Brad from the phone. So I think that kind of covers everybody. And Mr. Hawkins, too, I see him there, too. So thank you as well. I appreciate your help. I'm sure we have questions, so I will open the floor to board members for questions or comments or anything else you'd like to say. And actually, you know what? Let me just make it easier. I'll just go in order. I'll start with Mr. Albright and then I'll work my way around. So Mr. Albright.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So I want to maybe ask a few clarifying things based upon the earlier meeting. And most of us on the board were in with the VSB A earlier today, the Northeast Regional Rescheduled Meeting. When it comes to VHSL, what I thought I heard them say, and what I've read in the VHSL update, is there would be shortened seasons starting in January. And as long as we were in phase three, whatever we want to call it, there are specific sports, football, wrestling, and a number of others to include things potential like volleyball that would not allow to be played. Did I misunderstand that?
Mr. Albright, from, again, I'm, I'm still digging into that information as well. From my understanding, I'll speak on football specifically. It was put in the second season barring that we are in a phase where it is, it is safe to do so. It is included right now, but you know, that was one that I guess you could say had a little star beside it saying that, you know, certain measures had to be met for that to be safely conducted.
Okay, thank you. I just kind of want to make sure everybody understood that was, they're not guarantees, right? I think everybody's really looking at all these things. Something else came up in our regional meeting and Dr. Newman, I know you were in for part of it. And it had to do with the use of public money to pay for online access. And I didn't understand what was said. And I don't think I could probably thoroughly explain it here, but I would like maybe some, we could get a little understanding of that because we've bought a lot of the hotspots as Dr. Saunders just talked about. And I probably misunderstood, but I thought I heard them say we can't use public money for that.
Mr. Albright, I had jumped off the call by the time that conversation had occurred. Now, during our meetings that we have on Tuesday morning, we were told that hotspots were an allowable expense.
Yeah, yeah, it had to do with, they specifically called online access. And you know, you can go a lot of ways down that, that rabbit trail when you use those words. So I wasn't, as I said, I might have misunderstood, but I needed to ask.
Yep. During our meetings, they specifically listed hotspots as something that could be, could be purchased. I'm not sure what they're referring to. I agree with you. You can go down many avenues, but say internet access.
Okay. I guess a question, Dr. Saunders, or maybe more a partly comment. My understanding is Prince William County has outsourced for the entire year the development of online lesson plans so that they will be standardized across the entire division. Do you all know anything about that? Is that I understand that correctly? And is there, are there merits to that approach?
So what I can tell you, and I can also, perhaps, Ms. Dr. Kramp can jump in. I think potentially what they're talking about is utilizing some resources through Virtual Virginia and some other platforms that are already created and borrowing, so to say, the modules that exist for different courses. And so, yes, we've, we've looked at just different kinds of options to do that for certain courses. And so it's certainly something we've considered. I don't, I don't know specifically if you say outsource everything that they are doing. I'm not quite sure that I know exactly what that would be, but maybe Dr. Kramp wants to jump in as well.
Yeah. And I tried to clarify, everything was pretty broad. I believe it was math, science, English, maybe history.
Yeah, not knowing exactly what the platform would be. The ones I can talk about that we know of that are, have been made available across the state are Virtual Virginia for sure and some others that, again, Dr. Kramp, if you want to jump in.
Yes, that would be accurate. And we do plan to utilize the Virtual Virginia modules for all courses and content where they currently exist. Part of our return to learn professional development course with our staff will be to show them how they access that information and then how they can embed that into their Schoology course. So we do plan to utilize some of the same sources that, you know, you mentioned. And the second thing that I would, as we do, we are advising our teachers through our return to learn course that they will work collaboratively to build the Schoology courses for our students. And so as Dr. Saunders said, you know, it could be, let's just take, for example, world history at the high school. The intention is for all world history teachers to work collaboratively to build the course in Schoology. So same resources utilized, same assignments, you know, same places that they may go to access different materials. All of that would be the same regardless of which world history teacher you had. So again, you know, a common platform for all of our students within the same course, same things available for them on Schoology. What would be different is the live lesson provided by their teacher because that would be their individual teacher. But all students would be working through the same course structure in Schoology that the teachers built collaboratively.
Thanks. My last one is really just because Dr. Saunders didn't mention, but Mrs. Kiefer and I, yesterday, were on a Zoom meeting with Dr. Calhoun from the Governor's School, the joint group we have with Prince William Manassas Park. The Governor's School is going to operate virtually for the first nine weeks. That obviously will be readdressed as time goes, is what my, our understanding is. They're working with George Mason on that. Mason approves of that path. So, you know, obviously, transportation, they were concerned about, especially with everybody being virtual, what we'd have to be. In all likelihood, there's not going to be a vaccine in nine weeks and that'll probably be extended, but they are treating it as an academic unit, nine weeks by nine weeks.
So, oh, go ahead, Dr. Newman.
Dr. Calhoun called me and it seems like maybe the message may have changed from his conversation with me to where you guys were at yesterday. When he called me last week, he said that they were going to go for the first semester. They would be virtual for the semester. So maybe that's a change, but I will call him and.
No, no, it's Mrs. Kiefer's thumbs up. And I couldn't remember if it's nine weeks or semester. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Albright. I appreciate your comments. Mr. Di Maria.
Thank holding for two weeks.
About the VHSL thing as well that we heard today at the regional meeting. The, the sketch. You know, the gentleman meant. Mr. Di Maria, you're breaking up.
Am I?
Yeah.
Shoot.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna switch to Ms. Kiefer for a minute and then I'll come back to you, if that's okay. Ms. Kiefer? And I think you're muted.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay. So I was going to say, those were Tim's best comments to date, since I've been serving on the board. Yeah, thank you. I have a couple of questions, and if it's something that I just missed, I apologize. A question about Virtual Virginia. So I understand and have had experience personally with Virtual Virginia at the high school level. I was curious about, what do we know about the efficacy and how it's been used at the middle school level?
So when we talk about Virtual Virginia in reference to utilizing that within our courses, you know, Virtual Virginia operates kind of in two modes. One, full courses through Virtual Virginia that our students can take with a virtual teacher, you know, and those kinds of things. And on another side, Virtual Virginia offers learning modules for a variety of courses, K through 12. And so it's those learning modules that we would be accessing and encouraging our teachers to include in the Schoology courses that they are building for our students. They've been included by Virginia teachers, they've been added, they are aligned to our SOLs, and they are quality modules. For some courses, there are many modules available, and for other, those modules are currently being built because they're trying to respond at Virtual Virginia, just like everyone else. So, you know, there are times teachers may go to look for modules and there may not be many there. And other times they go and there's a module for anything they might want to cover within a particular instructional unit. So it's those modules that we will be working with our teachers to incorporate because they are great independent work for our students. They include videos and articles and additional resources as well as quick checks and so many assignments and assessments within them. And as I said, we know they're, they're good. So we definitely want to utilize resources, you know, when they're available and when it makes sense within our instructional planning. That's the Virtual Virginia, kind of holistically, K through 12, that we will be teaching our teachers about and encouraging use of.
Okay, thank you. And then I just, one clarification, I know a lot of conversation was around what would we do with kind of our special ed and ESOL kids? Looks like the decision is the same as it is for kind of everybody. It's 100% virtual. The in-person instruction that you said, I'm looking, I'm trying to look at the verbiage you used, is you're working on that. Is that just for when we return or have a hybrid model? Is that what was meant by that?
No. Oh, I'm sorry.
Where is he? I can't find him on the screen. I just heard his voice.
Yeah, and I'm talking to you, I'm right here, like you, we're in the same room. No, the language there is just saying that we're going to transition that in. It's going to be a phased approach. So we're going to start off 100% virtual for everyone. We have identified approximately 100th of our specification students who transitioned in first, followed by some of our Level 1, Level 2 kids. And at some point, we would even win safe transitioning in some of our pre-K students. But that does not have anything to do with the, the hybrid model. These were the students that we discussed in the previous meeting that we received in person. It's just not going to start on August 31st. It'll be transitioned in once we feel we're in a safe place to, for staff and students.
And that's a different timeline than one we'll be reassessing for?
Yes, ma'am.
In general?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, thank you. My last question, it's just a curiosity question. I haven't followed the V H S L just as much as I have kind of the academic side of this. So is that something that is going to be a board vote? So, and I'm asking because is this just something where we do, or is it, are we assessing as we assess if we're putting our kids in school? Are we also having them play sports? The reason I ask is anyone who's had to watch every baseball game that's been on, now that it's back, my son has it on, the Marlins, the Marlins team's completely wiped out. Their whole dugout, they got 14 people with COVID. So I was just wondering in that discussion, and I know it's kind of new and that kind of came out yesterday. But what is, what is the conversation if we know about that in terms of, you know, we're sending kids back to even play? You know, you say baseball's not a contact sport, and we're seeing differently the results of going back. So I'm curious, because we haven't really gotten to talk much about the sports, because this is all very new.
Ms. Kiefer, it's, it's not a board decision unless you want it to be one. We have asked all of our coaches to submit a return to play plan. It was submitted to myself, Mr. Flugrath, and Mr. DeGroot. I talked to several of the coaches that were at the graduation ceremony last week and informed them of my intention. And that is, as long as we're in the virtual world, I would have a very difficult time putting our kids out even for out of season conditioning. I think that was, that's sending mixed messages. And I don't, quite frankly, I don't think it's safe. If we can't educate you in the building, we can't have you out doing drills, running around, breathing on each other. Because, you know, and I use the Clemson Tigers as an example. We don't have a quarter of the budget that they have or the, the resources. And when they opened their out of season conditioning, 30 players tested positive when it first opened. We can't, we can't live with three, not alone, let alone 30. So, yes, I do have all the plans. I do not have any plans at this point of approving any to get started. But if the board would like that responsibility of approving when sports start, you can, you can have it. I can tell you, I don't mind having it. But if you want it, I'll give it to you.
You're muted, Mrs. Kiefer.
I said, no, I'm, I'm good with you making the decision. It was just, it was just a clarifying question. I think this board is, is pretty good with, with the decisions we've made to date. And I'm sure we'll have more coming down the pice. So you go for that. That was just really a curiosity question just in terms of when we're weighing academics and athletics, kind of where we stood on, on that. One last question, because again, I know other board members have smarter questions than the ones I'm posing. So, under the CARES Act, this is something I actually don't know. When our teachers and staff are working virtually, what is our accountability should they contract COVID? While working in their homes?
Ms. Kiefer, just so I, I'm understanding the question correctly. Are you saying while we're in virtual, if they?
Yeah, that was, I wasn't clear on what's the accountability when we're in the virtual environment? If one of our, our team members contract COVID.
Ms. Wingfield, you want?
I see two Tims, but I don't see Billy Kay. There's two Tims on the screen.
Can you hear me?
I can, yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. That would be the same as if they were in the building. The, the law still applies. So we would just adhere to the laws and to FMLA if they were, if they exceeded the CARES Act, so.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
I will say this too, as an aside, even with COVID, some people are still able to telework. They may not be ill enough, they can still work. So there's also that piece of it too, where they may not even go under FMLA or the CARES Act.
Thank you, Mrs. Wingfield. Thank you, Mrs. Kiefer. We're going to try to go back to Mr. Di Maria again. Mr. Di Maria, are you ready?
I hope so. Does this sound any better?
Sounds great. Thank you.
All right. Well, earlier I was on a meeting and the one now switched back. Now you get twice the fun. I know everybody wants a little bit more Timmy, so between, I had a lot of questions that came up. Presentation answered just about all of them. And then Mr. Albrecht and Ms. Kiefer asked some more. And so I am completely covered because the, the staff did such a wonderful job. And I don't mean to be just a cheerleader, but it I keep freezing up again? Well, for crying out loud. Don't swear this time. Wow.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm going to, I can kind of read lips. So thank you for being such a great cheerleader. We appreciate it. And your comments. Are we going to move on to Mrs. Williams?
Okay, thank you. And I don't have any questions either. I think staff has done an amazing job at really putting forth a plan and have really truly expressed and explained it very well to us. The questions already put forth from the board have answered any, any questions I've had. One comment, I was at DMV, standing in line today, and I happened to be with some parents with their children getting their permit, taking their permit test. And we had the discussion of online and how they felt about it. And every single parent and student felt very comfortable. They feel like they're ready and they feel like they can handle this. So I thought that was very encouraging. So I wanted to pass that along to everybody as well. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Seberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Saunders, I think it was on Slide 19 where you were talking about COVID training for staff in June and July. Could you clarify for me if teachers aren't reporting until August? Are they doing this on their own time?
So, and if Ms. Wingfield wants to jump in, she can. But this was COVID training for our department directors and department leads and people that are 12-month staff, like the principals and people at central office. All of our departments have a person who is sort of in charge of the person that gets reported information to, and then they report it to Susan Rediger, our nurse. And so there's a chain of command and how we report information. And so that was specific training for those. There will be specific training for all staff when they are returning.
Thank you. And can somebody answer for me? If at the high school, will the nursing program and the ROTC program that we share with other schools, will those be continuing?
So what I know as of now is, yes, we would expect that our students would still participate in those programs, assuming that they are being offered at those schools. And they're both offered at Osborne Park. So at this point, it appears that they will be, will be offered. And the students will continue to do those in a distance learning format.
Thank you very much. That's, I don't have any other questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Seberg. Ms. Stevens?
Thank you, Chairman Williams. I just have a couple of questions. The school division had to submit the Return to Learn Plan, I guess it was Friday. Is this something we have to wait back to hear from the VDOE, or is this a done deal?
It is, it was, it's submitted for, not for approval. They will review it if they have questions for it about it, then they will send those questions to us and we'll answer them appropriately.
And go from there.
Yeah, but it's not for official approval. You just have to have it.
And then my next question, how are we with headphones for students for virtual distance learning?
So I know, I think that question is for, or at some point, somewhere along the line. And I think Mr. Barrett had answered that that was not part of our distribution equipment. That is not something appropriate to students. What I do know is in many of the schools, particularly at the secondary level, it has become one of the items on a supply list for families to purchase headphones for their students. And with sanitizing consent, it is something that we would probably not purchase and distribute if we need out. I don't know, if Barrett wants to talk about that at all?
I think you covered most of it. Yeah, that's something typically that, that parents have provided and brought in and utilized it on a per-student basis. We have on occasion for special purposes for, specifically for division testing, SOL and access testing, we have provided higher quality ones that have a microphone, a boom mic, if you will, built into those, but those are quite expensive. But just the daily ones that, any, any three and a half millimeter jack, earbuds or over the ear headphones, any of those will work. So we've kind of relied on parents to supply this.
And Dr. Newman, can you share some information about how the, our graduation rates? Because I saw something in the news that was kind of exciting to read about our Osborne graduates this year. Can you explain or describe what was in the news?
Yes, I read that article as well. I have a very energetic, excited high school principal. That is in-house numbers there. We're waiting for the numbers from from the state. They, we usually get them around August. So yes, I want to be excited. Yes, I trust the numbers that we have in-house, but I always like the wait to get that official number. We we feel really good about the progress that our students made, especially from March 13th until we started having graduation. By our numbers, I want to say it's up to 94% or close to it. I don't have it in front of me, but the, the work that Mr. Flugrath and his staff and the students put in is simply amazing. And I'm so proud of them for, for what they accomplished, getting our students that were on the bubble motivated. You know, I have, my, my kid's not a senior. He's, he was in first grade, but getting them motivated to get online was one thing. So I know it was plenty of phone calls from from his teachers, from his, from his administrative staff, from his counselors. Again, it was a tremendous feat by them. And I can't congratulate them enough. And I can't wait for the official numbers to come out. Not that I don't trust that numbers, but I always, you know, I want those official numbers to come out so everyone can see it. And it's truly something that we should all be proud of with what has been accomplished this year, especially with the graduation rate.
And that's all my questions tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. And I think Mr. Di Maria may have something else he wants to add before we move on. So I'm going to see if you can unmute yourself.
I don't know. Oh, is that me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Oh, you can hear me too. It's coming back at me. Okay. You've only got one of me now. Sorry, guys. I know it was fun watching two of me, but you only got one now. I guess you probably caught some of what I said. I, I was just cheering for the staff and Dr. Saunders and everybody that, that, that put this presentation together and how I didn't have any questions that weren't unanswered before my, even before my first time to try and do this. I will bring in on the V H S L issue. It's sort of like our graduation. We set our graduation date early and just played it by ear. And I think that's basically what V H S L is doing. If things don't change from where they are now, not only will not be playing football or wrestling, If things don't change from where they are now, not only will not be playing football or wrestling, we won't be playing basketball if things don't change from where they are now. So I think what the VHSL has done is to set a schedule. Hopefully, we'll be able to use it, but we might not. So and then I would, I'm with Ms. Kiefer. I would gladly leave that to staff, Dr. Newman and his staff, to decide whether we can play or not. But to tell you the truth, I think it's going to be pretty obvious one way or the other. If we're in school, we'll probably be able to play. If not, we won't. So that's all I got for now. We'll see if we can do this with comments at the end, too. I'm gonna try and repeat this again. Good luck.
No problem. We appreciate your input and we'll work through these things. This stuff happens, you know, when you're online. So we'll make that, we'll make do what we have. So thank you. And with that, those are all the board members' comments. So I believe if there are no other comments or questions, we can move along to the next item on the agenda, which is actually a closed session. So may I have a motion, please?
Sir, can we have a board member comment?
We have comments on the agenda after the closed session.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended for the following purposes. 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1, Discussion of Personnel Matter. Number 1, PERS 2021-0024. Number 2, PERS 2021-0025.
Second by, motion by Ms. Seberg, second by Ms. Stevens, that the School Board of the City of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended for the following purposes. Part A, Paragraph 1, Discussion of Personnel Matters. PERS 2021-0024. PERS 201-0025, and I believe there's one more. PERS 2021-0026. May I have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Garza?
Chairman Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Kiefer?
Aye.
Mr. Di Maria?
Aye.
Mr. Albright?
Aye.
Mrs. Seberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Mrs. Stevens?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. The ayes had at 7-0. We will enter closed session. But after closed session, we will come back and then finish up with board member comments. Let me open my thing up. I think everybody's here. Me. Open this up.
It looks like everyone is here.
All right, one, two, three, four, five. Seberg's here. Okay, good. Good to go. All right. May I have a certification motion? I heard a move button here a second.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Di Maria, second by Mr. Albright for certification of the closed meeting. May I have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Garza?
Vice Chairwoman Kiefer? Mr. Di Maria? Mr. Albright?
Aye.
Mrs. Seberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Mrs. Stevens?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. The ayes have it 7-0. The meeting is certified. May I have an open session? Motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the School Board of the City of Manassas enter open session.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albright, second by Ms. Seberg, the School Board of the City of Manassas, return to open session. May I have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Garza?
Yes, Chairman Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Kiefer?
Aye.
Mr. Di Maria?
Aye.
Mr. Albright?
Aye.
Mrs. Seberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Mrs. Stevens?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. The ayes have it 7-0. We are returned to open session. For the first employee, PERS 2021-0024, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas accept the resignation of PERS 2021-0024 from Mayfield Intermediate School when a replacement can be found, oh, for good cause without prejudice, when a replacement can be found. Second.
Nicely done. Motion by Mrs. Seberg, second by Mrs. Kiefer, that the School Board of the City of Manassas accepts the resignation of PERS 2021-0024 from Mayfield Intermediate School for good cause and without prejudice until a replacement may be found for that position. May I have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Garza?
Yes. One second.
No problem.
Chairman Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Kiefer?
Aye.
Mr. Di Maria?
Aye.
Mr. Albright?
Aye.
Mrs. Seberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Mrs. Stevens?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. The ayes have it 7-0. The motion passes. Then there's one more motion coming out of this closed session that I think we need to vote on. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas decline to release PERS 2021-0025 from Baldwin Elementary School on the grounds of insufficient cause or unjustifiable cause. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Seberg, second by Mrs. Stevens, that the School Board of the City of Manassas declines to release PERS 2021-0025 from Baldwin Elementary School on the grounds of insufficient cause or unjustifiable cause. Mrs. Garza, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Chairman Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Kiefer?
Aye.
Mrs., Mr. Di Maria?
Aye.
Mr. Albright?
Aye.
Mrs. Seberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Mrs. Stevens?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. The ayes have it 7-0. The motion passes. Last item on the agenda is board member comments. And I will start with, well, you know what? I'm just gonna read like it's here in my printout. Mrs. Williams is first. So Mrs. Williams, the floor is yours.
All right, fantastic. I just have two things real quick. We had a, an education foundation board meeting. Was it last week? All these days are starting to come together. And we are still going to pursue innovative grants for teachers. We're trying to figure out how to go about actually doing that. So I just want to let everybody know that although we've been in COVID for a long time, monies have been raised. And we plan on dispersing those once we make a decision on exactly how we're going to do that. Second, I just really want to thank Mr. Flugrath at Osborne High School, of course, this board, Dr. Newman, all the staff at Osborne High School for actually taking on the challenge of having an in-person graduation. I really, I believe we were one of the first ones to actually do that. And that took a lot of work, a lot of effort, and it just was amazing. I'm sure others will, will talk about that. And what of course makes me most proud is that every single board member at some point in time, as they could, were there. And it was just to see the camaraderie of everybody and how hard they worked to get this done, to make this year special for our seniors was just incredible. And I just want to thank everybody. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Next, Mrs. Seberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to echo the thoughts that Robin has on graduation. It was fantastic. As a school board member, it is the most exciting thing to be a part of. And, you know, we're just a small part of that. But it was just so, such an honor to celebrate these students. It was wonderful. And then graduation rate, when that is finalized, we've got a lot of celebrating to do. I also wanted to welcome all our new teachers to Manassas City Public Schools. It started today. It's very exciting. I hope you find your home here and are with us for a long time. And today in our VSBA Northeast Region meeting, we got an update on some legislative updates. But we also shared our reopening plans among all the members of the Northeast Region. And there's 13 districts in the Northeast Region. I thought it was interesting that two of those divisions are still undecided at this time. One is going hybrid and 10 out of 13 are starting 100% virtual and some with a delayed start. And then lastly, I wanted to just note a public service announcement if there's anybody listening. For the Manassas community, the Prince William Health District is conducting a free COVID-19 testing at Mets Middle School in the parking lot tomorrow, Wednesday, July 29th at 5:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Seberg. And next, Mr. Di Maria.
Thank you, sir. Can you hear me and understand me?
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna have to turn the internet on and off in the house, I guess. I think that's what my problem is. Yeah, I'd like to thank Senator Warner for meeting with us yesterday and all of his support. I'm not going to go through everything that the man said, but it's nice to have somebody in that position on our side. What Ms. Williams said, what Ms. Seberg said, I have to go along with them as far as the graduation goes. I've been to a lot of Osborne graduations and none better than this. Not just for the extreme effort that was put out by staff, but just for the intimacy of it. It was absolutely wonderful. This is one of the silver linings. Now, not that there's very many, but one of the silver linings of having to go virtual the last nine weeks. And I was just, I've been a part of Osborne's family since we opened, and I've never been prouder. And that goes a long way because there's been a lot of things that I've been very proud of. And I want the naysayers to come to our school and see what we're all about. I'm very, very sick of people saying that we're a failing school system or that the entire public education system in this country is failing. It is so wrong for people to say such a thing when they're not in our buildings, when they're not seeing these children that we got to see over those five days it was. And to this board, each one of those kids that had at least one board member there the whole time, usually two, sometimes three. And the gratitude of the students, some of these students blew me away with their gratitude, how much they appreciated what staff had done for them. And the parents especially yelling to Mr. Flugrath, "Thank you. Thank you so much for doing this." It was a shining moment for Manassas City Public Schools, and I'm very proud to have been a part of it. And I'm also very proud of this board for the actions they've taken and for their input. So thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Di Maria. Mr. Albright?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got to echo to Mr. Flugrath and every single staff member, the parents, the students. In more than 20 years, that means 20 graduations, this one was unique. There's something new going on all the time. But I don't know if there have been any better. Mr. Di Maria is with me when, you know, with a couple of them, the students that came through. And without getting into the specifics, you can watch the video when it goes live. I think it's August 10th through 11th. Because of the intimacy, things were allowed to happen that normally would not happen in graduation. It was really neat. Staff did a magnificent job. I know it was hard. Golly, it was hot out there. But I tell you, the students genuinely and their families appreciated. So thank you for everybody for making that happen. Great presentations today. I've been reminded by a couple of friends that life trumps everything and that we've got to make sure we are putting the safety and, and health, the welfare of our students first. And I think that's everything we heard in the presentations. It's what Dr. Newman talked about when he talked about athletics. And I really applaud us for the approach we are taking on that. We're in a marathon. There's going to be a whole lot more of this going on over the next several months. This isn't going to be take two aspirin and call me in the morning. We're in for a long protracted challenge. And I am hoping parents, students, staff are up for it. Because I think what's going to happen is we mutually are going to learn how to revolutionize education. And that is really exciting. Lastly, since no one else talked about it, we had our VSBA Northeast Region meeting earlier today. And an exciting thing, oh, you did mention it, Suzanne, but two of our students from Round Elementary School and Mets Middle School came in first for their art. And, you know, usually we're all sitting there and everybody gets to applaud and everything. It didn't get announced. It came at us an email. But that is really spectacular that our kids continue to excel throughout the Northern Virginia region. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Albright. And thanks for mentioning the awards. Those are very, very good and well-deserved. And we need to honor our students when they do well. So thank you. Next, Mrs. Stevens.
Thank you, Chairman Williams. I want to echo what Mr. Albright said. This isn't a sprint. It's a marathon. We're not even halfway to the finish line. We've got a lot of more, a lot more work to do. I really want to say, one of the things that I'm really excited about with this return to learning plan is the PD that's going to be offered to parents. I think that's such a vital component. We always think about supporting our students and making sure our students are successful. But behind our students are our parents. And if our parents feel they're successful, they're going to be able to help their students be much more successful than they would otherwise. I also want to say, like everybody else has said, graduation was phenomenal. What I really liked about it was that each student was recognized individually. And watching each student walk across stage and be the only person on stage and getting to talk to just Mr. Flugrath and him having something specific to say to them was so powerful. I think it turned around the whole end of the school year. All of our seniors were, were adrift after March 13th. All of this graduation, all of those senior events they had planned, everything they were going to do was gone. And then we had this amazing graduation ceremony that honored everyone individually. And I think that made just the biggest difference for everyone who was there. I haven't seen so many people smile, and you could tell they were smiling even when they had masks on. And for some of our seniors, it was really emotional getting to watch them across stage. They were so happy. They were so excited. They were so thankful. It was wonderful. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, August 18th, the Virginia Assembly is meeting in Richmond for a special session. One of the things they're going to talk about is the 2020, 2021, I believe it is, budget. There were a number of pieces of legislation that required funding. They were all deferred when the pandemic first hit. Several of them relate to funding pieces of education funding. One of the things during this specialist session that's going to be looked at is restoring that funding, ending that deferment, and getting those bills in place and getting the money in place. So please, 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 please. If you want to see our schools be fully funded, if you want to see some of those new programs, I think there's stuff for English language learners. There's teacher raises. Those are the two that come to the top of my mind. If you want to see those things happen, please reach out to Senator Jeremy McPike and reach out to Delegate Lee Carter and tell them how important it is that they, that the General Assembly that they, that the General Assembly restores that deferred spending. We need it. We always need it, but especially right now during COVID times, we need it twice as much. So please, reach out to them, send them an email, phone their offices, talk to them on social media, just get the word out because the more they hear from us, the more likely they're going to vote in our favor. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens, and congratulations to you and your family and your graduate. Mrs. Kiefer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have much more to add. I think everybody eloquently stated, but I will say that, you know, the, the graduation was amazing. Everybody has, you know, verified that, from parents to the kids themselves, to, to all of us here. But something like that to pull off takes more than just a prayer and a hope. It takes leadership and it takes commitment. And, you know, it's, it's beyond, I mean, Dr. Newman, Mr. Flugrath, the team. The number of people you saw at stations that were there to mobilize our kids, that's leadership at all levels. And that's what Manassas City Public Schools is. And that's what I pride myself on when I hear everybody else talk about the experiences they're going through in other districts right now. So I just want to thank every single leader we have in this division, which is every single person that is a part of this family. I, I, I get to, one thing y'all forgot was mentioning the photographer. So one of the best parts of the graduation, so not only was the leadership clear on people who are essentially Manassas City Public Schools, our photographer couldn't have been more engaged with those children, yelling and screaming. He was more excited than they were that they were graduating. He was phenomenal, the way that they handled and took family pictures and just made those kids feel even more special was just another extension of, of how this family comes together, even if they're not technically family. They find it, they see it, they feel it. And I'm so very proud of, of that man. And man, I tell you, I just want him to do my kids senior pictures this year. He was so phenomenal. He can make anyone smile. I also, you know, I, I tend to tout, our community still needs our help too. So I do want to say, support local businesses. They are warriors out there as much as we are here. If you can do it, get out there and support them, pick up some food, buy a small gift for someone for Christmas, do what you can to support them. Let's rally around them as much as they have around our schools. And I'll just end with something I always like to say from, from a mentor of mine. Let's continue. I, I know we're asking hard questions of the team. I know we have a lot of them and I, you guys are champions in answering them. I appreciate the candor. I appreciate if you don't know the answers, you get back to us in a timely manner and you allow us to have a conversation. I know we all appreciate that dearly. So let's just keep, we're all here to keep the main thing, the main thing, and that's our kids and making sure they get the academic achievement that they all deserve. Thank you all. Stay safe.
Thank you. And I'll just read what everyone else said. Graduation was awesome. We educate our children and we do what we do so we can get to a point where they can graduate and they can have a day like they had. So congratulations to them. Thank you to Mr. Flugrath, the staff at Osborne, Dr. Newman, Central Office Staff. So, because he bought a tent and he stayed for many hours, more than most of us. And we don't measure it in hours and we can be all, you know, give what we can give, but you went out of your way to, to, to be there. So I really appreciate you doing that. And I appreciate all of you because we all came, we all represented because we all love our students. There's a saying I like to repeat, a proverb that together we go farther. And I think that together we will go farther and we did this with the graduation. So congratulations and thank you all for your help. I appreciate you and your time. And graduates, I'm sure a lot of you are listening right now, but actually maybe none of you are listening, but whether you are or not, we're proud of you and to their families. Thank you for your support and your time and your energy. And with that, we'll end and I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the City of Manassas School Board adjourned. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Kiefer, second by Mrs. Seberg, that the School of, the School Board of the City of Manassas adjourned. May I have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Garza?
Chairman Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chair, Ms. Kiefer?
Aye.
Mr. Di Maria?
Aye.
Mr. Albrecht?
Aye.
Mrs. Seberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Mrs. Stevens?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. The ayes have it seven zero and at 7:40 we are adjourned and hopefully I'll see you all soon. See you, Sarah, and have a nice evening.
Good night.